July 14.
Okay, June 18th, July 14.
So, May 22nd, there's the, it's got a footnote of one. One does not say that. The two other meetings say the two words required.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Just curious about like the discussion. If somebody, for example, there was a reason, like they were sick, but they couldn't go in person, but they could like zoom in, can you do that or not?
No, not to vote.
Okay.
But otherwise.
Yeah, they could zoom in.
They can zoom in and watch, but they cannot for the board. Yeah.
Just it can break down to just repeating that word. I see.
I'm watching that. She's coming.
Hmm?
No, she's watching the door behind you. She's like following all the stairs.
So, um. This is not in any note color, and I guess it's probably too difficult to put onto a note anyway. But I'm gonna point out to the board members, we're gonna give estimates on what the tax implications are and how much we borrow and what the interest rates would be. And all this on April 13th.
I think that might be important to write down.
Well.
You don't have to put it on a note. It can.
So.
I'd actually bring, because there's gonna.
It's already here that we're talking about the financial analysis.
Yeah, it might be.
I'm just, I'm giving you.
Yeah, okay.
That's a lot, you know, because Mike's not at the 29th, that's maybe a good time to discuss some.
So Mike, Mike has nothing to do with that.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, since Mike can't be at the 29th, that might be a reason.
Okay, so.
I don't understand.
Okay, so wait, I didn't get to finish what I was saying, so. We're gonna talk about what this looks like on as far as borrowing and interest rates and how long it will take. And we're talking about this on April 13th of 2023. And we are doing our best to estimate what everything is going to be like in November of 2023. So you can see the challenges there as far as it's difficult to predict like financial markets that far in advance. And then even when you pass here, you're talking about not really borrowing and getting money until February. So this is where we do our best right now, but it is, I'm just telling you, that is also that's subject to change.
Right, and you'll contextualize that also at the meeting for the public.
Yes.
And we've tried to do our best to contextualize at every meeting that we're working with estimates that we are projecting into the future. I hear you. I think we've been really trying to make that clear.
Yeah.
And when you say you're doing the best you can, that's the best we can do, right?
Yeah.
I have a question. At which should we have the best estimates for all the plans?
So, so I can speak to that. We had the first round of estimates, right?
We had several rounds, so.
Yeah.
Um, so I wish.
As Amy pointed out yesterday, one that was printed in the Gales Springs News is different than the one on our website, that's all. So. Okay. Because there were some corrections. Okay.
Okay.
So we have one set of estimates that has changed and one set that hasn't. The A's have been the ones changing.
But A, but A plans.
The A plans because they were based upon the Facilities Committee's renovation suggestions. There was just a meeting this week where that was gone through. You know, TJ was in it, I was not. Jay was in it, Judith was in it, as well as Mike Murdock and Mike Richly and several members of the Facilities Committee. They were able to, I think, come to some agreement. So we have what I would call much stronger numbers for the A plans. The B plans and the C plans are ones that Mike Richly was working on for us. Based upon, they have to remember this, based upon what the OFCC said we qualified in for in 2021. Literally last night at around five o'clock, I got our new OFCC plans, okay? Because it's all dependent upon enrollment projection near tenure, which I did get that. Mike also received that. However, Mike went on vacation yesterday.
Yeah.
So certainly by April 5th, we will be able to present plans with these costs. What's the caveat? The caveat is they're based on 2022 costs. So we started here, we're about right here, okay? We're getting really close to being right here.
Okay, so but as some of us have expressed, right? When we're not on the fourth meeting, as three of us here on the board are not, it's hard to wait, check board docs, see with that. So I'm just, I want us to be clear about what are we gonna be able to accomplish on March 29th, which is next week. So here's what I'm hoping that whatever came out of that meeting this week could be shared.
Yes.
Yeah, I was trying to find it.
Here's what we're hoping.
Working on finalizing that for next week.
I can, I can submit all documents to everyone as soon as I get them. But I'm just gonna say this publicly. As soon as I do, without any context or a face to face, they're everywhere. And then I can't do my job because I have to clean up a false narrative about the documents I just sent. And I'm not implying that this is what happens with you necessarily. I'm not implying that. But I do feel like I have to, I mean, I could throw documents at you.
Right.
So. So my intention was without Mike, because he will not be there on next Wednesday, I certainly know enough to know, I can speak to the plans, Jay can speak to the plans, I can speak to how our enrollment has impacted the numbers, how they're different from what you've seen. And I'm happy to do all of that. What I can't do, because I don't have a software program that I wish we could, because now is the time to do it, is to say, we have all these plans. Let's go through the program of requirements and see, because it was Amy's contention with Jay and I, that the square footage was oversized and that is just inaccurate. There's a reason that, please let me finish. There's a reason that it is oversized. And we tried to explain that to you. And, and these are things that we have to explain together. When the OFCC says, we will do something we don't normally do, we'll allow you to segment a project and do a 512. We have to oversize certain areas. The cafeteria, the kitchen, hallways, mechanicals.
So in terms of process, what I would just like to, this is why it is so challenging when we have a meeting in which board members are not present. Because the only place that we have to discuss and deliberate as a board is at these public meetings. And we are often receiving the information days or hours before we go into that room. So when, when people are un, this is why the scheduling is so important. If we're not there to deliberate and discuss, which we are trying to do in real time, in front of the public and with the public, it is incredibly complex. And I respect what you're saying. I think that it's true that they need to be contextualized and I want you to have conversation about it. But I, I'm just reflecting back to the, to the overall pressure. It's a pressurized environment in which we are also trying to receive the information, to be well informed and to even just understand how we're gonna move this forward.
Right, and you know, I would just emphasize that I'm pretty sure that oversized was my school. And I was concerned about those numbers, you know, in the version that was in the paper versus the version that was on the book, put on the website. Is it, there's, and there's, I was concerned about those numbers being out there without Mike there explaining, because I had questions.
So if I might, um, um, I will tell you what their words were and then I'm gonna make a commitment to the board here this evening. The reason I'm feeling passionate about this is, um, that, um.
No, no.
Hang on, please, because I don't want to, um, uh. I'm unconvinced that this state requires the school district to hold an oversized medical hospital. That was one. Can you say that?
I think that's a better for me.
This was an email from, I noticed that the draft still features the exact same bloated square footage presented at the school board meeting. I'm sorry, but this is a mess. I'm disappointed in how this situation has been handled. That was directly.
Yeah, that was misleading.
It was also, you also said this does not match our educational mission, which I challenged you on. I don't believe you know our educational mission. What I, the commitment I'm making to the board, because Lisa, your point is well taken.
Can I have a moment?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah. I'm better finished and then we'll process it.
Everything I just received last night, literally before walking in here, I will, I will forward all of that to the board. The board will be blind copied, so you cannot respond to each other. I will provide the updated document, as updated as it is, for the A plans. I will provide you all notes that I have from the 14th meeting. And, and you will get that tomorrow. So that doesn't give you a full week, but it does give Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Sunday, Wednesday. I will give you a copy of the program of studies as I have it. I do know in my absence on, um. And Mike went over. Correct in March that Mike did go over the program of requirements, but I will make sure I give you that. Please note that the program of requirements will change because of the new plans, so I don't have that yet. I can contextualize perhaps kind of what you're looking at with the new OFCC numbers, but what, but you're not gonna see the other piece because that's a mic piece where he combined the C plans, like with, now I have the new segmented 512 numbers that we didn't have. So you have that piece, so you can kind of piece together the A pieces plus that for the Cs, if I'm making sense. Because it's, it's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot. And we're, and we're looking at looking at estimates.
Okay, so you wanted to, you wanted to have a conversation about the change there? So if you do, then actually I'm gonna ask Daniela to facilitate this thing.
Okay.
And, and we have a live issue again, and I think we need to deal with it. Each time we have these conflicts, we have to just see if we can have better understanding and see if that clears things up, which I think they did here. So let's see if we can do this here. So Amy, you wanted to respond?
Yes.
And then, Daniela, sorry. Daniela's taking.
Sorry, Amy, before you start, so Terry, just to kind of listen to what Amy's saying and then you're gonna repeat back what you heard her saying, not your perceptions or interpretations, just what she said as you heard it. Is that okay?
And to begin this is that I hear that you were offended by my language. The numbers that went out last week, they were out in two locations without an expert to talk about them. And we had the oversized numbers on the website for the C plans, as characterized by Mike. In the paper, we had, bloated is a loaded word, I agree with that, okay? But we had the numbers that included additional square footage at Mills Lawn that was unnecessary.
Okay, that's gonna be hard for her to enroll that, so stop there and.
Okay. So the facts were, these numbers were out there without.
You have to interject.
An expert to call.
Terry, can you respond to that?
But I think, yeah, but I think, I think that lots of pieces of, right? Thanks, thanks, Amy. Terry, do you need anything repeated?
No.
You're okay.
You were offended. You know that I was offended at your language. You were concerned because at a meeting there was no one to interpret two different sets of numbers, one that was in the Y S News and one that was at the meeting. And you also believe that there was excess square footage numbers noted and that should have been corrected for Mills Lawn.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Did Terry?
And I was, yes. And to qualify is that I was expecting the numbers associated with a couple of the C problems to go down from something that Mike said. And I am, you know, and it's possible that I misinterpreted, it's very possible that I misinterpreted what Mike said, but I expected both one number to be removed and one number to be, to be reduced. Okay?
So, Amy, you wanna just stop for a second? Terry, do you wanna just reflect back what you heard Amy say, the additional?
She expected one number to be eliminated and one number to be reduced.
Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah?
So my expectations were met partially, but I also felt that we had a problem, you know, we talked about misinformation.
Okay, I think, I think that's an important piece. Can you reflect that back, what you heard now?
Am I still summarizing?
Yeah, just, just.
That was an important piece that was missing.
Yeah. Is that, is that enough? That she reflected back to you?
I appreciate it, what she reflected back.
Okay, so you felt like you were heard?
I, I, you said one thing about, there was one thing that, did you mean to say that I was offended?
No, you knew that I was offended at your language.
Yeah, exactly. And let me take the opportunity for apologizing for in the given moment using.
I made an apology.
Quietly, lunch.
Okay, thank you, Amy. So you feel heard?
What?
You feel heard by Terry in terms of what you shared, that she understood what you were sharing?
It's good to take this moment because I know this was a problem.
Okay, great. So Terry, do you wanna respond then with what Amy shared with you? What's, what's your response? And Amy, now you're just gonna listen, so that you can reflect back to Terry exactly what you heard her say, without your interpretations, your perceptions, just what she's saying. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay, go ahead, Terry.
I sensed that you expected some numbers to change from the March 9th board meeting to the March 16th listening session. I was not at the March 9th meeting. I was unaware that numbers were gonna change, but I also know that I can't control the Y S News. And I know that they put out in good faith what they think is accurate. And we put out what we had that was accurate at that time.
Thanks, Terry. So what did you have to notice then?
I hear that Terry, uh. Let's see. Um. Summarizing is kind of, you want to.
Do you want, you want to.
Difficult steps.
Sure, we need.
But the, um, yeah, cool, yeah.
Yeah, maybe, do you wanna say it again? Maybe take one chunk at a time, maybe that's easier because it's hard when somebody's giving.
Well, no, is it, what I heard is that, um, that she recognizes that I had an expectation about adjustments in the numbers. And she was not at the meeting that was present, that, that there's this understanding of lag in some of the releases. I mean, certainly what was put in the paper versus what was released that day on the website, is it, there's, there's going to be a noticeable lag. And, and I'm not sure there's an acknowledgement of that being problematic, but.
Should we, should we stop for a second?
That's, that's, that goes, that goes, that gets the issue over more forward on the, on the board.
Okay, so in terms of what you repeated back, in terms of what you said, do you feel like you were heard? Is there anything you would edit, adapt?
No, no.
So you don't feel like you're heard and there's nothing you can edit? So how does this help you in that case?
It doesn't. I guess it doesn't. I appreciate the exercise, but it doesn't. For me, this is a, this is a deeper issue. And, and the issue has been a long time in coming and that when multiple people are doing my job, this is what happens. This is what happens. I don't know what happens over here and I don't know what happens over here and I don't know what happens over there.
Um.
And it is not an expectation I have for us to resolve this today, so.
Not a bad thing to put out there.
No. Can I, well, I think actually I just wanna invite, even, even if it's not something we can like really address today, but I really wanna invite, what did you hear Terry say now? What, what is actually the issue for her?
Okay, so.
Can you, can you reflect back? Not, not a response, not a response. What did you hear her say?
Well, from the connotations of what we were talking about, I interpreted that as meaning is that discussions about square footage is not something that the board should be discussing.
Well, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I'm sure you have interpretations of what you heard, but I guess I'm just wondering what Terry shared right now, what did you hear her say is actually like the core issue that is under this for her?
It was a bit vague to understand.
I did not say anything about the board should not have input about square footage. I didn't say anything about square footage. When I am not part of things.
Right.
When I am not part of committees, when I do not lead initiatives, committees, whatever, that typically the superintendent leads, that is what starts this whole chain of multiple people leading the organization. In the end, I work at the pleasure of the board. I know that. But I also know that it's very clear what board responsibilities are and what my responsibilities are. And so. That causes these gaps. So that causes something that you think is gonna happen from one week to the next because other board members or others, not even board members, have been involved in, in making decisions.
Well, I thought this was, well, this was part of a public discussion where this expectation was set up. So the last meeting that I was in, it was part of Mike, was the last public board meeting.
So can, can we just pause for a second? Because I think that's important, like maybe, maybe Amy, if you're not able to do it, but maybe somebody else can kind of reflect back what Terry is sharing, what they heard as this underlying issue that Terry is bringing forward, I think, so we can kind of clarify what it is that we're hearing. What is, what is Terry putting on the table that we're all listening to, that she's naming as a.
She's interrupting, okay?
So it's my understanding through what Terry has said now and other times is that when Terry is not leading the process, that there are different interpretation and different data, set of data that is going out. And that creates an issue in which we are right now is that we have conflicting set of data that have not all been checked by our administrative.
Well, and we can hear from what you just laid out and discussed with the entire board, well, with the board members who are here, is that there's adjustments to the numbers associated with option A and that there's still some motion with, and there may be still some motion for the other two options.
Higher altitude, even higher level.
What I'm hearing, what Terry just said, is that she does not feel supported to do her job. And when she's not able to either be present at a meeting or make decisions that typically a superintendent would make to clarify the expectations, both for the public and for the board members, that we end up in these situations of miscommunication.
Right, and well, in this case, there was a miscommunication, there was even a little bit of frustration. I think it's right, it was spoken by all four of us with the circumstances that we found ourselves in.
Please don't speak for me. I'm not speaking on any frustration. I also did not share the expectation that there would be an adjusted set of numbers for the listening session. That turnaround time, I recognized immediately, and Terry wasn't even at that meeting, did not, was not an expectation that I held, so let's just all speak for ourselves and.
Well, I'm.
I just wanna hear that piece of what Terry is saying, that she doesn't feel supported in her leadership.
So the, it was, you know, so I made time that day that we had this email exchange. It was that day or was it the next day? It might have been the very next day. So we had this exchange and there was, there was frustration that we were all dealing with as we were dealing with this, you know, rearrangement of the listening session so that we got together and we could talk about those, talk about those numbers. Now, there made a lot of progress on that, but there's obviously still more progress that needs to be made with these option numbers. Specifically, I'm curious about, I mean, because we still have to get to that one section, that one meeting with the principals where we're going to be talking about.
But, but I guess here again is the gap with not actually really listening and finding a common understanding. Because I, again, had no expectation that numbers were going, that numbers and updated numbers, because clearly numbers were shared at the March 9th meeting, that's a public meeting and numbers were shared. I had no expectation that the numbers piece was going to be in that next listening session because it became very clear from the legal advice that we would be potentially in a liability situation.
Well, that's.
Both personally, financially, and the potential of facing criminal charges. So it was very clear to me that we were going to have to remove that piece of the conversation and/or ourselves from that next listening session. But other people had other expectations.
Well, yes, I mean, we, we were going into that week, certainly on Monday, I had the expectation that Mike was going to speak to the public and to the board.
Sorry, Amy, I think let's, let Dorothy.
I think there are two issues. I wanna make sure that we're not losing the two issues here, that we can all hold them. One of them is that Terry is not feeling trusted in her leadership and she's not allowed to work for her leadership, as far as I understand it and I hear her say. That's one issue that I don't want to get lost in the discussion of a second. And then the second issue is that we are still, we have a duty to put verified numbers on to the public and this is a process. We went through part of a process at the March 9th meeting when we identified areas that needed to be corrected.
Right.
And there are still some of those answers and corrections that are being made.
Right.
So I wanna put it out there that my expectation is that those numbers are gonna keep changing as we're correcting and refining those. But two issues is that the numbers will keep moving because they're correcting and where we're finding the numbers. But the first one is that when we're not allowing our superintendent to be leading up front, then we have different sets of numbers out there, some of it are not there at all.
Great, so last.
Not to mention that we're impacting the morale of the district staff, which is, I think, actually really important to acknowledge because it's also happening to me today with having one of our essential board members who's been part of our core facilities team meeting and held that meeting this week, but is not here at this meeting today, in which we are all here to refine our agreements around how we're gonna communicate with each other and how to come to a common understanding of our process. I feel that that is a critical, it makes me sad and disappointed and upset.
Well, there was a great deal of discomfort in this room over this.
I think we all expected discomfort in this process, at least I did.
Amy, Jenny?
Yeah, um, first off, I'm going to second the, Terry moved to share information as it comes out and blind CC everyone and try to keep everyone as up to date as possible without breaking any sunshine issues. But that facility meeting that happened this week.
This is a really.
A Zoom?
Yeah.
It, it, it was, I guess.
Oh, was one with.
Where, with Judith and TJ and Mose and Mike Richly. And, and me. I was invited to that meeting after it was already planned. And that is a fundamental issue of how we function. The, oh, I think it's down right now over here. Communication going forward. It's, it's in our code of ethics that, I mean, really, yes, the board members are. are, Terry and I are here for the board members to use, to accomplish or answer their questions and have things met. And when, um, it also, that's my point. If you're working in a vacuum, if you're working alone on something and that you're gonna bring to everybody, that you're doing something wrong. That's part of the communication issue. Because you're alone, nobody knows, nobody sees it. I mean, nobody knows that you're even working on this stuff. And then you drop it on us. And we're like, everybody else is like, whoa, where did this come from? Well, you were working in a vacuum. You were working outside of our processes. So the way that that meeting should have happened is, should have gotten requests from a board member saying, I still don't think some of these issues have been addressed. I need you to reach out to our vendors and set up a meeting. And I would like to be included and I would like these people to be included. Instead of, hey Jay, there's a meeting going on and we're discussing these numbers. Can you come? Well, I'm gonna come now, but what if, what if I had a prior engagement or something? That's, it, it's a fundamental failure in how our, we're supposed to work.
Would you like to, would you like to share that, the code of ethics now? Is this a good time for you to share that?
Could I just also say what I'm hearing you say is that it's also fundamentally anti-democratic. When you're not inviting the people who need to be at the table to be at the table. You have undermined our leadership and you're being fundamentally anti-democratic to what it means to deliberate in the public. And I believe all of us are committed to democratic principles and practices. But what I'm hearing, what you share that Jay, is that actually that is an example of not practicing democratic principles about us.
I, I guess work can be done outside of, you know, this is why there's committees. This is why we do our, basically, this is why we do our organizational meeting at the beginning of the year where somebody goes, you know, we have our village correspondent, we have our legal update. We, you're the transportation advisor, you're on, I, I cannot remember all. I know you've got one. We, we have the, the insurance committee, even though that rarely happens, but we have, we, we delegate these duties and we set up these processes for that. But yes, also included in that is typically that the people that are doing individual work as board members are also including the treasurer or superintendent or both of us. I mean, this is, um, well, I, I even asked to be included on, on so many emails for, for this planning where a lot of times, um, there's emails that are sent to TJ and Terry and they're sent to TJ and Terry. And I'm like, Terry comes and tells me about them, but you, you realize you, you're just, you're adding work for her by excluding me from processes where I need to be informed. Now, this is where I also said blind CC and CC people properly or just using emails where if it's directed at you, you know that you should probably respond. If you're just CC'd, then you are just being informed. You don't necessarily need to respond. And then if you're blind CC'd, there's reasons for blind copying, but that's, that's mostly for us. That's the assumption.
I'd like to add one, one piece to that too, which is I was invited to that meeting last moment. I appreciated to be there and I was silent. And I have to say, it was a two hour meeting. It took three hours. I didn't know what was going on. It went back and forth and in and out and it needed some planning. It needed some preparation. That's what we're here for. We can help. So process design, agenda setting, clearly stating, a very simple stuff, but everyone's so rushed and I get it. And everyone's doing a thousand things. That's what we do. That's what we do. So if you have a meeting, let us know beforehand. We'll help you if you want it. If you don't wanna help. But a three hour meeting should have been two hours and the two hour meeting, the three hour meeting was very confusing.
In the absence of having a Jay Rothman, right? Both districts and the way you're supposed to operate is you go to your legislators, right? This is your team. These are the people that we hired and we pay them good money and they're worth every dollar.
They were paid due to the basis they're not invited to do that.
And more, but, but this is why we have them to do that organizing and set those meetings. And, you know, I have, I have set some of the, the preconditions for this, um, you know, so, um, that is in part my fault. I, I will apologize to you, Terry and definitely DJ. I lucked you up more than, more than one email. I forget to do that, but, um, you know, and there's reasons for that with how, how the last election was and, and how we're on and trying to find a solution particularly to facilities and how we're going forward. So, um, you know, maybe some self-reflection is good there. Like, if you're out there to have done that better, but.
Well, I mean, this retreat is good. This retreat is where we're talking out loud about processes that we've been through every year. What I'm hearing is that we're addressing some of the, what I'll call immaturities of a young group. Does that make sense?
We're learning. We're learning. That's enough. We're learning.
I do not agree with that.
We're learning. That's, that's fine. We're learning.
Well, there's just one thing about how to, you know, is that there's certain disciplines that you, that you, um, and certain behaviors that you lock into over time.
That's right.
And there's, there's, what I'm hearing is that there's a bit of a lack of discipline in terms of who are included in conversations, right? Particularly Jay.
Okay. And, and with that, I think that's, I think that's actually, hear it as a constructive input, which is it's time to do better. Which means learn from lessons of where we haven't done as well as we might.
Yeah.
Great. Let's do it. And one of the, I think you very usefully sent this to me in the morning, just review the code of ethics, which helps the board to understand how they're supposed to function. So why don't you read this for us? And if anyone has any questions, it's a good time to, to ask questions of, of Jay and Terry about what are the ways that, that Ohio law says you are supposed to conduct yourself?
Sorry, well, this is, this is not, not Ohio law. These are our policies.
Yours. It's yellow.
A lot, some, some of them are dictated by Ohio law, but. The best practice from the House of Lords, so to speak. Yeah. So this isn't just our district. It's most of it. Yeah, but we, but we do have some control.
Before you do, Terry.
And I would just say, it's something I put on our, um, sheet is that if we can remember when this board convened in January of 2022 and could not even, the board could not even come to a place to sign board protocols. Those protocols have been signed in Yales Springs for years. I think this is the first board that has not signed them. They are standard for every board. And if, and when you look at the protocols in conjunction with this, it really provides us all of the information we need about how we communicate with, with others, how we work together. So, um, I unfortunately, because I did not come from the office, did not come with a copy of this one.
I could make them if you wanted.
I, I emailed it to you.
They're, they're.
Do you want, do you want?
All documents.
Only it's more.
Okay. But I guess, I guess I just wanna be explicit about what you were saying here. The board didn't sign it or one person didn't sign it?
The board didn't.
The board didn't sign it.
I mean, there were a couple of drafts that were floated around and, but I think the decision was is that policy, the policy covered a lot of those issues. Now we can readdress that. For New York, it's real.
I remember you were now at a discussion.
I did not push it forward because I thought that it would be a contentious debate and would only harm us moving forward as a group at the time.
So maybe we can.
And potentially that was a mistake and I should have set those out earlier, but it was a judgment call at the time.
Right. And so, so again, things that we learned from the past, do we correct them or we just say, okay, let's keep going? So let's, let's come back to this. Let's, we are going to.
Yeah, we move on, but I, I wanted to make one nuance and then one comment about this. The nuance when we talked about our administrators being involved is that they should be leading. Really, we should be the central point that funnel all the information so that we have consistent information going out. And I know that we've moved on to this five minutes ago, but I wanted to make this clear. Because we need consistent information and when independent, uh, individual board members go around, we have inconsistent information. Then we're getting into those issues. And then about the discussion of the policies, I know that I was, my expectation, and maybe it was wrong, my expectation is that we were gonna have a work session on that. Because I thought that they deserved to be looked at individually. And we didn't because we got really busy with this that needed to happen. But I, I do see that maybe in view of that, it would be, uh, a worth investment of our time to go through them.
Well, all right. So then do we wanna pause for a second and see if we wanna add this up? Is it, is it worth your scarce time?
Well, that is why we're here today and why we were supposed to come to some communication agreements today. In my opinion, that would have been really helpful. And I guess I feel that my time is not being respected if we're not all willing to show up and do this work together. So I'm, I'm not sure at this time if I'm willing to put another date in what is a very busy time for me professionally and in my life to add another date when I'm not even sure with confidence that our full board would come together and come to a full conclusion on this particular issue of the board protocols. To me, it's too complicated in what we're already doing.
Yeah. My suggestion would be to punt it to August. Or at, you, you see one more done with facilities when things slow down, you can punt it further.
Yeah. Can I, can I just make a comment though? Just as like an outsider, kind of sitting in on this process. I can completely understand and respect that, but at the same time, I think you do need to come to some agreement on communication going forward because otherwise I'm not quite sure how you're gonna move successfully through this process. Right? Because we don't, it's like you don't have the time, but this is stopping you at every turn. So.
But I made the time. I made the time and one of my board members did not. And so I'm just gonna take a little break. I'll take a little deep breath, but I made the time and one of my board members did not. And I feel disrespected by that.
Got it.
I'm sending the board calls to everyone so that they can have a little discussion.
So let's, I think we all need to take a break. Yeah. Let's all take a break. Let's, let's take a break.
It's an old document. It should be re-looked at.
That's fine.
This was updated in September. This was, this is five months old, right? This is revised in September 2022.
Yeah.
If this is, if this revised is part of our memory, we went through all this.
Yeah, I know.
It's heavy.
So I guess technically the one that was in January 2020.
This one didn't change.
It didn't change. Okay. My bad.
And we can say the four board members are committed to some of these, at least. So we can leave here saying, we have some ideas for how to improve communication that's concrete. So that's one thing that we'd like to do. I think we need half hour for that. We wanna finish the timeline. I, I was meditating where you started. So I don't know how far you got. How far did you get on your timeline adjustments?
I, yeah, I didn't, I don't think we did any adjustments.
You didn't do anything at a, all right. So we need to finish the timeline. Forty-five minutes on that.
Summer's gonna be difficult. We're gonna, we're gonna.
Okay. Well, we'll see what we can do. So that's an hour, that's an hour and fifteen minutes. But that takes us to the end.
Forty-five minutes on the timeline.
No? You don't think so?
No.
I think it's close. Don't you think?
I think it's very close.
It's in ten or.
Really? All right. Half hour.
Well, I think what we get done on the twenty ninth.
All right. So, so let's, we do communication timeline first. Georgie, Georgie, stop.
We do, um, we do communication.
Let's set it down. Sorry.
Communication?
We do communication first. All right. So.
Or do we wanna speed through timeline?
Whichever.
Any preference? You sides? Jay? No, no, Georgie, go.
I would use timelines, but we've got that nailed down. And I think it's tangible and we can.
Right. So Daniel, I wanna move aside and.
Let's set a, let's set a timer and just decide if there are other little details. Cause I think we can spend too long on it.
All right. So besides timeline and communication agreements, what else do we need to do?
April 5th.
You were gonna teach us the process.
The group process.
So I'm doing, I'm, we're gonna do teach you the process as part of reaching agreements around the communication.
Okay. Then, then let's nail down the timeline.
All right. So we wanna, so we wanna limit this to a half hour.
Half an hour.
Excuse me.
What's that?
Half an hour.
Half hour. And if it's less, that would be.
Excuse me. I was less you.
So that I understand in the timeline, are we gonna talk about what April 5th is gonna be there?
Uh, we're gonna talk about where we talk about. What April 5th will be.
All right. So let's, let's start, um, so let's start with March 29th. And what we say is Wednesday work constrained. Can we start at seven? It's Amy's request. Can we do seven to 10? Is that what you're asking?
Could we do six thirty?
To nine thirty. Amy, would that work?
No.
Six thirty, nine thirty? Everybody? Okay. Six thirty.
With, with an attempt to get us out by nine.
Yeah. And just to be clear, this has been communicated to the public?
Six, seventy?
No, no, no. The six o'clock has been communicated to the public.
Yes, six o'clock has been communicated to the public.
But the date has.
The date, oh yes, the date has.
Right. And so we are modifying the ti, I just wanted to be clear. We're modifying the time.
So we do have, we can modify the time?
We can.
Well, we can. It, it will just only go out in the, today is Friday and will only go out in the online version of the news.
All right.
Um, but we can, with, here's the thing. We, there's no requirement that says it. We've noted, put a notice of the meeting or have a meeting. I think we, we're okay to change the time.
Yeah. So you, you only need to, twenty-four hour notice, the local newspaper on your social media of when.
Guys, I just wanna point out, Luisa, this is why this is not the same time.
Okay.
So six thirty to nine thirty. Okay. Six thirty to nine thirty. Okay. That's on that. Finish. What are, what are projected background for each plan?
Break ground. Break ground.
Breakdown?
This was a question that I had for Mike.
What are projected break ground for each plan?
Cause we talked about, you know, for, cause for the A1, that's one of the things that I thought would might be an interesting consideration as we down select is that for each plan, what would be the projected, put shovels in there.
Yeah. So add into input information, is there a different timeline for different, different projects?
Not tremendously and Mike will not be there upon that night. So he will be unable to.
So let's, let's perhaps, let's revisit this for the.
Definitely the 21st, but maybe even the.
Twenty first, where are we?
April 21st.
April 20.
Down.
Just put it between the April 20.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Discuss November 23 and May 24 ballot initiatives.
So this is a request for you. And that's related to the other thing that I have up there.
April 13th.
Oh, it's April 13th.
I'm sorry. I should have done the blue first, shouldn't I? I should go do all the blues and then we'll come back and do.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you realize?
No, no, no. Keep, keep going. Okay.
April 13th.
Is that April 13th? Okay. Possibility of rearranging levy asks.
Yeah, we've got pre-levy asks and that's one of the reasons why I'd like to move this up to the 29th. Cause I thought it would be a good idea to discuss it sooner rather than later.
What do you, what do you mean levy ask?
Can I add that?
I don't know what you mean.
I think this is what you've been wanting to talk about for a long time, right?
This is what I've been wanting to talk about for a while.
Can you, can you explain what it is?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, let me just say is that, have you seen what the village council has done? Is that they're kind of, um, grading, um, the rates is that that's our plan. So I have an idea about, you know, there's different, there's, one of the things is that with the financial is that there's different revenue sources. And so, um, how and when we ask for those different revenue sources, I think it would be profiled. It's something I've talked.
April 13th.
It's late. It's late.
We have to ask for all of our revenue sources at the same time.
Yeah. We have to separate that from the discussion of local.
Oh, well, no, I think, I think you were saying.
I think that we can, I, I think that we can separate things that are, um, locally funded.
Um, that, that's not exactly accurate.
April, April 13th and, and send me a list of your questions.
Well, we'll talk about this one. The, you know, and it's something.
April, April 13th, I would be expecting levies.
It's late. It's late. It's late.
Okay, so.
But is, is there a, I mean, it just sounds like maybe Jay, you could meet with Amy and talk this through so that there's clarity as to what, what your vision is and what is possible, right? Can you guys just have a, like, one-on-one meeting about it?
Okay.
Yes.
Amy? All right. Let's, let's keep going. Okay. Thank you, Luisa. I might need missing information from Mike.
Now, that's one of the problems with the down selection is that, is that it might, we might be uncomfortable about making those down selections if we have questions from Mike at the time.
Granted, that's a risk for the 29th. We know that.
We know that. I think that needs to be communicated. It would be here.
So, I mean, we might. So, I mean, we might wanna put a pin on a couple of things and say, it's hard to make this distinction.
So. I mean, so, so this has to come out, Architect will not be there.
Architect will not be there.
Right, so, and 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 we need to note that this is a problem, but nothing we can do.
Yep.
It's one of the reasons why I'd kind of like to move some of the discussion for the thirteenth, because there's a couple of things that I think you would begin to process.
So are we making any changes here other than noting that it's a problem and we're always operating in different situations?
Well, let, we talk with Jay and we'll find out if there's, I I'd like us to try something.
Great, okay. Great, okay, wonderful, thank you. So discuss planning for April fifth listening session. Alright.
Twenty ninth.
So next week, you wanna have your discussion about what you're gonna, how you're gonna do it?
Last, we were talking about that B L C example?
Plus, plus we are reducing from eight to four.
Perfect. Well, that's what it's, that's what it says, that's the goal.
That's the goal.
That's the goal.
And you're gonna talk about how you're gonna share all this at your listening session or how you're gonna get it out about this at your listening.
So I might, I might make a suggestion. I think it's a, I, I do think it's a heavy lift for the board to, to, on next week to go from eight to four without the architect. So here, here, here's an alternate, perhaps, possibility. I think it's important to review the OFCC requirements so that everybody understands how they mark them, so that we continue to use terms like loaded or oversized, which carries with them, um, a lot of, there's a lot of connotation
Well, I haven't used those.
in those, in those terms. So I think that is, if, that, that is certainly something that I feel comfortable doing. Jay and I can tag team that, um, so we can explain some things.
Hold on, hold on, Jerry, so you're suggesting instead of down selecting, do this, is that what you're proposing?
I, I think we just got new numbers and I think it's a really heavy lift without Mike there.
Yeah.
I am not an architect, so without him there explaining things and going through the program of requirements.
Let me just, here, reflect what I've been heard from a number of people. Of the eight, two or three are easy to remove and that might help the community.
I, 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 it is my professional opinion that that is correct, but there's nothing that says that on after April fifth, the board can't say, we're, we're eliminated. I, I guess it could help the community, but here's what I anticipate. We have new numbers from, um, the OFCC. Without Mike there to join them to other numbers that he has been working on, then I think it would be really hard. I don't wanna put the board in a difficult position without him there to ask questions of, unless there's a plan, and perhaps there is, that rises to the top that everybody says there's just no way.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's what I was thinking about too.
And I don't.
If there's, if there, if there's an option, if there are options that everybody's kind of like going, that's an easy one.
And anyway, I probably was the one that did the original, you gotta reduce it at this point, because I was trying to.
Right, right, right. My, my sense is, is, is in preparation for your listening session on the fifth, if you can down select a bit, you're gonna do yourselves a big favor.
I always think about these meetings in terms of goals, there's thresholds and there's objectives, right?
Right.
And your objectives can be a little bit outside of reach and they should be, they should push you a little bit.
Right.
And if we don't get down from eight to four, if we get to eight to six, that's awesome.
It is.
If we get from eight to eight, that's okay, it's not a failure, right?
There you go. And, and we will still have other things to be talking about.
Yeah, I can make it to that, that's, we tried, we tried.
I think it's a good, it's a good plan.
Because see what the hour is, if it's nine o'clock, we're not certain that this session will go down.
It's a good plan. And, and here's where you're gonna have to do your agenda planning and we're happy to help you, which is, these are all on our plans. What do we do when, what's the timeline, what's the buzzer, what's the, all of those things? And if you plan it well, you can do it. And if you didn't do it, you then say we tried and we're gonna do it next, so it's, I think it's great.
We can have it on the agenda and go, you know what, it's getting late, we're gonna.
Okay, Terry, you have a second issue.
Yeah, I, another potential item is to certainly review the timeline. Um, a third is to talk about what April fifth will look like. In line of our restrictions, so is it, is it Mike presenting plans and then people just come up and like the line?
Right, right. Right.
And on the line of that.
Right.
And then another would be to, and and Jay and I talked about this, to, um, address the aid plans, the potential cost saving, the reductions that were just discussed this past week. So I think we have a number of items that will be useful.
Yeah.
Um.
May I make a, a suggestion on that?
Mm-hmm.
I'm very much interested in having the cost saving, uh, discussion. I think that since the data is ready on that, let's just have it.
George.
Uh, for the April fifth, I would want it, I was hoping it would happen today,
Sit, sit.
because I do believe that if we, for instance, ask of the village mediation program to step in, we need a little bit more time to get ready themselves.
So here's the caveat with that.
Mm-hmm.
If, and and it would have been the same if we had done as we originally planned. Once they start, we have to ask them.
Yeah.
Right.
Because if they are small grouping and in any way asking folks to rate and sort, we cannot be there.
Yeah.
And it cannot be agreed.
Is this rating and sorting, what they did?
We have to do the work.
No, I understand, but this sort of work, is that considered rating and sorting?
There's not plan up there.
Right, so, so if I do something similar to that, that's probably.
Yeah. But if. If they have people go from table to table and they say, you know, this plan, do you, is, is cost the best or is, you know, that's.
We can't do that, the board can't do that.
But I do think there's value and and it's nice to have a variety of meetings. I do think there's value in having folks one at a time come up and speak.
I do too, and I thought I heard Judith say yesterday in the evening that that was a good idea.
That's what, talked about how we're probably not gonna have to run April fifth and just go up and go.
And I think we could have some form of, we could have facilitators there, they're moving to running a process,
Correct.
but that could be resources.
Correct.
It things, right?
Sure, sure.
Okay, and and so if we do that, which I see the value of it, can we also have a process to welcome comments and writings from people that can't attend the listening session? It is all there. But can we, can we have some very intentional phrasings around it when we announce the, uh, the meeting so that we can invite more efficiently those comments?
Danielle, we can have, so we can have our communications person ask people to put it out on social media and that.
Take a question.
Please send your feedback.
Yeah. So you're planning April fifth right now, right?
Yeah.
Or you're just.
Yeah, more or less, and.
So move those over to April fifth and then.
And concurrent.
Oh, I think it's just like part of the plan, April, so it's just as planned.
You can even have those communications pretty out, put it on a wall, so people could go up and see that.
Right, you're planning your.
Yeah, I would like that.
Unless.
I'm thinking about.
Or you can have someone read them.
Yes, something I was about to say, sometimes I don't hang on, hang on, hang on.
Oh. Wait a minute.
You guys, I think you're gonna be, I think there's gonna be a lot of people there speaking, so we do not want to read all of these comments.
Alright.
I respect somebody if they can't make the meeting and they, they.
But in a packet.
Put it in, in writing, that's great, but I don't know that we wanna take any meeting time to read them because we may not be able to address all of the people that, um, wanna speak.
I agree, but if we can have it in a, uh, on the board doc.
We can have, we can have it, and we've done that in the past, so, um, whatever we have up to date.
Yeah.
Okay. Thirty, thirty minutes is almost up, we've only gotten to two, two dates. We spent, oh, fifteen minutes, okay, we have fifteen more. So, so, um, what I, what are we doing, tell, somewhere is here.
So now we're down selecting to, to the, we're down selecting the number of plans as possible to do on March twenty ninth without the architect there, so seeing how far you get. And then reviewing the timeline is another possibility. Uh, Terry brought in discussing planning for April fifth listening session, including potentially getting in front of people who won't be able to be there in person, inviting.
No, that's, that's for April fifth.
That's for April fifth.
That's for, oh, okay, that's for the session.
But review the OFCC requirements, that should be for March twenty ninth.
Yeah.
Reviewing OFCC requirements and maybe addressing aid plans, yes.
Yeah, if we, if we fly through the first things and get there, we're like, wow, we have an hour left, let's start talking about the plans right.
Okay.
And if we can get the consensus of taking them down, we will, if not, we move forward and we'll do it.
Great, okay, keep, keep going.
April fifth, we have our listening session that'll be a little more fleshed out, all together on the twenty ninth.
So.
So I think we're good to go.
Go on to April thirteenth.
Yep, April thirteenth, we're gonna do the board meeting now.
I think Amy just added something better.
Educational need.
Yeah, I mean, when you formed the triangle, I mean, so we've got ecology, green space, I mean, green space is important, campuses are important as well as facilities, but the, um, I just feel like, uh, there's, there's something about that triangle that doesn't communicate, it doesn't, it, the direct line, so ecology, green space and.
And I'm gonna build a conclusion.
affordability, those, those aren't the three things that I would pick for decision process around educational need. So I would love that sort of input from somebody and a discussion on that.
I was just gonna say, I think that was our response in this retreat to this facilitated, uh, previous listening session. I don't feel any need to bring what was in that past listening session to April fifth. I think we're working out a plan to have a different format. We don't need to bring the triangle or the squares or anything. That was facilitated by village mediation, that's my opinion.
I, I, I agree, I think you're right, and, um, both the first listening session and the data from the World Cafe, I think are usually shared, and I'm not sure how and who and where and when. But I, I think it's all good, good to have in the ether. So, and I, I think you're right, April fifth is not the time to do that, but there should be some way, some system by which people can access information.
Yeah, I think that's.
By the way, one, sorry, one of the things that was given out at the listening session was, sorry, at the World Cafe, was how to access all the information you already have. So Jay, I think I was asking you that, how, how is the input from the first listening session being shared? How can this be shared? And, and I'm not sure who and when that answer is got, is received by, but we need some systematic process for letting the community know their input's valued, it's shared, it's available. The newspaper's doing a good job, maybe that's enough?
No, we share all of our information on our website and in board docs.
So, so, so including, so all the, the curiosities and, and.
I like side wonders, I'm just gonna be honest with you, they were up. We might have taken them down while we were waiting for.
Legal advice.
Legal advice, but they were up, we had a whole piece, quite obviously. Um, but yes, we have it all, I will talk to our, um, communications person on Monday and.
This is all digitalized, so you can have this too if you want it. I don't know where we put this as a conversation. I'm not really pushing it, but just suggesting it ought to be considered, so.
So.
April thirteenth, how information is shared, community?
What does it say on there?
It says discuss one over twenty twenty three.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I, I wanna finish this, how, how is information shared to the community from all of his work that's being done? Where does that go?
We.
All that's always.
So we send out.
No, no, I'm not asking for the answer, I'm asking for, how, how are we gonna decide that and make it available to people? So that everyone knows.
I think we've already just, I mean, this, these are our typical communication protocols.
Okay.
We, um, the newspaper is always very good, but our own system, we send to our parents through Parentsware. We put on our Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, website.
Okay.
My suggestion would be at the very beginning of April fifth, somebody like maybe TJ gives a short introduction that's just sharing out, that contextualizes the previous two listening sessions, this retreat, that we received this information, that we've been discussing it, that we're in sort of deep deliberation and it kind of helps people see, you know, that we're actually in a continuum of this conversation.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful.
That's great, that's. Good, okay, thank you.
It'd be like, how is this stuff?
Perfect, let's keep moving.
And then you could share what Terry's saying.
Great.
This is where you can find it.
Yes. And I think we'll leave it up to those mediation, how they would share this, right?
Mm-hmm.
Thought it was the fifteenth.
Is everything done there?
We moved, we moved that one posted down, so we discussed that already, which one?
Yeah, April thirteenth, we're good. Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Twenty first.
And the other, yeah, the other ones are all good.
Moved a couple of.
The other ones are TBD, oh, for the twenty first.
Time?
Time, does that mean, do we have a problem with our timing?
No, you have to set it.
We just established a time.
We can do that through email.
Yep.
Do you wanna set it now?
Um, it's a Friday morning, six to nine?
I was hoping we would do it before the, the evening, there's no school that day, but I wanna point that out for.
So, school for, no school for students.
Five to eight?
No school for students, it's a P D day. Uh, so I'm thinking about the attendance of parents potentially, I'm thinking about also my training issue here, but, uh.
Now, but, and, and can I make one more suggestion for this that I should have put up on my notebook? It's my suggestion that that date in particular is a work session where the community is not invited to respond.
Invited to be. To have comments, okay.
Correct, they are absolutely, because otherwise we, we have to have.
That's all. We need to get first session.
No, 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 I don't dispute that, I am.
No, 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 we don't respond.
This can happen.
So then that simplifies, then, um, it is, it, it will be live streamed soon, okay?
Community doesn't respond.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do it like we normally do.
Then, uh, but are we still open to having it not late at night? Can we do it earlier, like?
We do five.
It's a board decision.
I, yeah.
What time are you closing, five to eight?
Five to eight.
Bert, Friday the twenty first?
I can do that.
I think I can make that.
Okay.
We said work.
Okay.
Five to eight, okay, so that's done, and what are, what are projected background information for each plan?
It, I think, uh.
Yeah, that's gonna have to be that.
Oh, yeah, that's the break ground, that's the break ground, yeah.
Oh, alright, so it's gonna be there, so, so ensure that this is good background for people.
So we were. Yeah, I would go with the questions that we. Yeah, so.
Okay.
We're doing those slots, yeah.
Right, would be nice to have less than eight options about that.
And you were the wrong one, I'm sorry, you need to change this.
No, we're good, we're good, we got.
Yeah, you're good. What does the print say?
Yeah, so what are projected background rate dates for each plan?
Okay.
Yeah, we can get that involved.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, alright, go on.
And then this is the.
Thank you.
What was the red?
And then each traditional work session, missing sessions.
Nice to get down, down for me.
Okay, guys, perfect.
Um, so we have need to meet, meet on two final plans and hear from community members needed, but.
Oh, I have a conflict, well, I mean, I, I, I just gonna have to, so, um, I'm assuming that would be, you know, if it's in the first two weeks of May, that's, those are finals for me, so.
Well, alright, we'll, we'll, that's, we don't, we'll send that.
I'm just saying, the first two weeks of May.
I can, I can send them via email.
Okay, let's leave that special later.
That's exactly all that, but we'll offer the others.
Okay.
I'll send her an email, we'll, we'll, we'll.
Yeah, I'm just sending you first two weeks of May, I'm gonna meet.
Anything else here?
I know.
Uh, no, I think that's all we have there.
Okay, is that?
Yeah, I've definitely got it.
Okay, put it up and out.
Yeah, it definitely can't be on the eleventh, but I think lots of other people can't do.
And do we have anything on the eleventh?
No, we've already moved our, our other board meeting to the twenty second.
Um. Okay.
So then July thirteenth, we need four G O E members.
Yeah, that's just a, a note of, of the voting regarding, um, it's the date on the thirteenth that just has to be adjusted.
Uh, may I, sorry, can I go back to the June eighth?
To a different date.
Yeah, we're gonna have to move it over there because.
At least four members being there.
I'm out for the.
Correct, to be, you know.
Uh, Amy, Amy, on June eighth, we need at least four members to be there for sure. Ideally, the whole board, can you be there on June eighth at the regular wedding?
We do, yeah, I mean, schools, classes are done for me then, and I don't know anything that would take me away.
So, yes.
So June eighth, you can be there.
Okay, so then the bottom hearing that, oh, four of us, hopefully five of us can be there on the eighth, okay?
That's fine.
And then we have the same requirement for July thirteenth, but I, I heard a request to change the date.
Yeah, I, I will be out of town between the tenth and the twenty first, unfortunately, I can't, so, when you come back?
I come back on July fifth, late, late at night, so.
Not the fifth, okay.
No, please don't do that.
No, and maybe not the sixth, um, and you're leaving the ninth, so let's.
Well, the sixth would, I, I know you're just going back.
I, I can make it.
The sixth would be just a week, a week before, the same day, but a week before our regularly scheduled for the.
Could be checked.
Or we could.
The sixth.
I can, I will make it the sixth.
I cannot do the twentieth, the following day.
Okay, so let's, let's do July sixth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For now?
Yep.
At our regular time and place.
So that's usually in actual.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
There is no.
I think, Dave, you can send that updated or.
Yes, yes, we'll, we'll, we'll update it and check it out.
And then I'll.
Alright, any more, any more changes or updates to this?
I think that's, that is good for now.
Um, I guess one thing, let's see, so this, so this week, you're gonna decide on what's gonna happen there, right?
Yes.
So you'll figure out who your facilitator is gonna be, if it's self facilitated, if you have mics, if you want the community mediation folks to help you, you'll decide that on the twenty ninth. This phone, TJ's facilitating, and leave all that, because that's a long time, good, alright, let's push that, great.
I do, I do have one more question about scheduling, and I know that it has to do with the facility supporting, so me, Judith, me and most of you. I see that those meetings goes on forever for every two weeks, how long are we gonna?
We will be done in, eh?
Yeah.
That's what I thought, I just, I realized, but it was not included.
Right?
Yeah, I probably just did every two weeks, yes.
Okay.
So.
You don't resume until you have a project to lead out.
Till you have.
Okay, so that was my first question, the second one is who is in charge of the, of the agenda for the fourteen six?
Ready.
That is my question.
Is the one in charge of the agenda?
He, he drives that, partly because what he does is, as he's giving the. He, he drives that, Dorothy, because what he does is he's getting the information and refining the plans. So when he comes to meetings, board meetings, let's say, and we say, hey, Mike, do X, Y, Z, then he does that, and then he's part of the, um, agenda for the board meeting.
Okay, I don't know when our next one is. Okay, all right, we'll have a conversation on the side. Okay.
So you can hope to turn, look, look.
So we're done with the timeline discussion?
Yes, we are. Amy lost your phone, maybe.
Okay.
Inside of half an hour. That's good, thank. We have, we have, uh.
Do you need somebody to call you, Amy?
Three minutes, four minutes to go.
No, no, I can, I can ping it.
Oh.
Alright, so now let's do thirty minutes for the consent process and, um.
Okay.
Reaching agreements on your agreements around communication, on your your proposals around communication.
Probably.
Should we, um, because Jay, did you wanna, did you wanna go through the code of ethics? I think that's some of it. I I can say that some of these, if we read them off, some of them are, no conversation will be needed. Yeah. Do you wanna go through those now? Let's, let's do the communication agreements first, and then let's see what we have left over from time and focus. Okay, so, so the consent process, it, Amy and Terry and Dorothy have heard a bit about it and experimented with it when we worked with Y S D C nine months ago. So it's a, it's a process that sits between consensus and majority. And basically what it does is it helps to create a process that folks say, um, our job is to get everybody feeling like they're heard and their input matters, even if we don't ultimately agree and vote together. That, and the way it works, I I created an analog system for it, which is we say, here's a proposal. How many of you accept the proposal without any changes with great enthusiasm? How many of you are willing to go along with it? You think it probably could be improved, but it's not worth the time, at least not now. So you'll go along with the folks who are enthusiastic. How many of you think that something has to change before you're willing to accept it? And and here's the difference between consent and what we're gonna do. When a person says no, if they're outvoted, it's yes. But here's what makes it so different. We really wanna know why they say no. We really wanna see if we can help make some revisions in our proposal so they'll say, at least I can support it, I'm enthusiastic about it. That's A. That's the one thing we wanna do with a person who is in the minority. The second thing I'm gonna say to them is, we hear you. What you said matters. It probably represents people behind yourself. So we appreciate your disagreement. We're still gonna vote for it. It's still gonna go forward. This is a majority rules process. If it's consensus process, this would, this would end it. If you can't get the person to to change, then it's over. In this case, it's only about deliberation. And here's a, particularly when I work in the Middle East, and there they beat agreements to death. Whenever these realizing that Palestinians reach an agreement, they say, uh-oh, something's wrong. If they agree, we better disagree. So then they end, then they they mess up the agreements they've already had. This really helps. You've already agreed, now shut up. You've already accepted it. Be quiet. The only ones we have to hear from are the people who say no. So it's actually a conflict positive system. It's a minority positive system, which says, okay, you've lost this vote, but you haven't lost your voice. We're not gonna go the way that you're disappointed about, but we're willing to try in not a lot of time. We don't have much time. So we're gonna try for like two minutes. For the person who disagrees, you get two minutes to try to come up with an alternative. And that's what we say to people, which is if you say no, try to come up with something that the rest of them will say yes to, so that you support them. And others, once you've heard them say no, make a proposal that you think might enable them to change their vote. Right? Okay, so you you get it? And and why in our complicated process it could be really valuable? Alright, so let's, let's try it on something that's not particularly controversial, which is your suggestions for how we, um, come up with the communication agreements at least among the six of you. And we'll figure out what we do with the seventh, when it falls. Alright, so Daniela has begun the group vote. Let's take one topic at a time.
Yeah, so I think what's really interesting is like a lot of the ones from positive plus and the minor side are kind of revolving around this. To talk to the board president before individuals act and show him allow superintendent and treasurer to lead. So I think this is around respect for roles and and post, post policies and processes.
So we asked what was a particular proposal that we're gonna support. How would you frame that?
So respect the role of the board president, the superintendent.
So let's write it down.
Well, I wanna check right before we write it down.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The board president, the superintendent and the treasurer, and follow board policies accordingly. It's like something like that. I'm not sure how you want to phrase it.
I I I like the idea. I think that we can work on the phrasing so that it accurately reflects, um, it.
Well, I I I think you should come up with something that you can say, enough of you can say, yes, exactly as it is.
Here's, I wanna say, here's my worry, is that the person that needs to be in on this is absent. And I'm afraid that if we're not getting the language right, the, the idea won't be conveyed, it will be misunderstood.
Too much language. Oh, so we should get the language right.
I, that's what I'm thinking, like being very fine intentional in our wordings.
So we're being with each other. I I I thought you were saying, let's just not, let's just leave it general. No, let's make it, let's, let's get enough of you to say, a majority of you to say, yes, this is, this is the text that we're gonna accept as a communication guideline for ourselves.
Yeah, and I just proposed a summary, but I think it's important that then you get the the words that you wanna be.
Yeah, so write it down as you suggested it, and then you can make friendly amendments before we take our poll.
So I was saying, respect.
I would, I would want to see like enforce the rules.
Alright, well, you can make our amendments on it. We're just, we're putting it up as a draft, and then you'll say that you want it. And then once I have a sense we might have a straw poll, we'll take it, and we may revise again.
I'm just saying to everybody. And and I also said, and follow the board policies, but I'm kinda wondering if they're too separate.
Well, that's, that's kind of.
Let's just start with this one. Let's start with one.
Okay, so let's.
Yeah, let's start with one. So.
So how would you reword?
Any friendly amendments to this? Any rewording?
Follow the chain of command and keep the treasurer and superintendent out front leading for this one.
Okay, so the.
Friendly amendments. So follow the chain of command, right? Suggest with you.
And let the Sega.
And let the. Or keep the superintendent and treasurer, I let the superintendent and treasurer lead for this one.
And I could tell you right here, I'm beautiful.
I got this idea. I thought we could use the language that was.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the, um, the board has a responsibility.
But the board's responsibility is not to lead the district. There are clearly defined roles.
Which is why this first one might be easier.
Okay.
Right? If we're concerned about about this being accepted, maybe the first one is a little closer.
Just keep the blue, you mean?
Well, of course, but if you look at the chain of commands, the super, the the board is, you know, uh.
How would you change this? Did you change either of them?
Well, you know, is the, is the board's responsibility to lead or supervise the superintendent and treasurer?
Would it be maybe helpful to have this first one and then to have like a def, a defined, so board president, colon, X, this is their role. Superintendent, like to have this clearly defined and maybe to bring the policy in here to like have a care when we say this, what do we need?
This was, yeah, this is, you know, so the protocol kind of, um, was introduced some language like this. So I think that, um, this is something that we definitely want to include the all five members in. And there's a way of, uh, and there's, there were suggestions about protocols to maybe use instead. Um, and so, uh, this is a conversation that was begun back December, January, um, uh, before.
Okay.
Can I give some language?
Yeah, let's try some language and see if we can get an agreement.
So here's language for chain of command. Um, follow the chain of command, and then this is, I'm just gonna read and you can do, the last stop, not the first, will be the board. We agree to follow the chain of command and insist that others do so. While the board is eager to listen to constituents and staff, each inquiry is to refer to the person who can properly and expeditiously address the issue. All personnel complaints and criticisms received by the board.
We don't need to throw that up there, so.
No, right, but the last piece says, we will resist to solve problems for the constituent. It is not the board member's job to fix problems that belongs to the superintendent. I guess that's what I'm saying, and TJ was saying, when it isn't the board's job to do our jobs.
Fair.
It isn't your job to do our jobs.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying is that there was particular language about the protocols that were drafted, you know, ten years even before we came on board, and there were some divergences that Judith had specifically. And I'm just saying is that.
Would that be avoid my programming?
Judith has an opinion here, and I would prefer to table this specific language.
See, I disagree respectfully. Well, we all cleared our calendar for this, as Luisa was saying. We cleared our calendar for this, at great expense to some of us. We are here.
She shows not to.
Part of that, the ethics is make every attempt to attend board meetings. We all weighed in on these days and these times and made a commitment. And if we can't commit to those things, then we surely cannot commit to larger, more important things.
Well, but this isn't, I I would argue that this, when we're talking about communication, is that this, we've had a broader issue besides, you know, chain of command and specific policy protocol.
So we'll deal with those when we get them. This is the one we're dealing with now, and let's see if we can reach some agreement about the language and your commitment to it. So what we have so far is, um.
Well, we have.
Follow the chain of command, and the last stop will be the board.
And then the last stop will be the board. We will resist solving problems that it is not our job to solve.
Okay.
What do you mean by the last stop will be the board?
Lisa? Lisa?
The last stop on the chain of command is. I would be willing, I think, if we understood and were committed to respecting the roles of the board president, superintendent and treasurer, and let the superintendent and treasurer lead the district, that to me, um, includes what is also stated in more detail. So I, if I were to give a friendly amendment, I would be willing to take off, follow the chain of command, and the last stop will be the board, because those other two things in my mind are the more important, all encompassing pieces.
Sure.
And I, but I I would keep that, we'll resist solving problems that is not our jobs to solve. So if we take out, yeah, follow the chain of command.
Alright, so so your proposed language, and we're gonna take a, we're gonna take a straw poll on it, is respect the roles of the board president, superintendent and treasurer, and let the superintendent and treasurer lead the district, correct? Okay, how many of you support that exactly as it is with enthusiasm? So one, two, three, four, five. And how many of you can live with it? Five to one, perfect.
I'm kind of a little bit here.
Great, great. So so this one, this one passes five to one to zero. Great, let's keep going. Okay? Alright, next one.
So, okay, so so that was, so we're talking about policy, the next one was around policy, so follow, uh, so follow board protocols, follow our process, go through the board president, superintendent, and.
I think that's the same thing.
Hold on, still, oh, sorry.
What's that?
That's the same one. Or I was gonna say, should we address this, we will resist solving problems that is not our jobs to solve?
Is that related to protocols or?
Sure.
I feel it's a lot of.
It's spelled out even in protocols.
Alright, so this has.
Statement is.
But maybe the statement alone or, oh, so maybe then the statement alone is better to have, like.
Both, both will state the car.
Alright, so so we will, yes, no, not doing this one?
Okay, I understand. Okay, yeah.
Well, I think there'll, there may be some disagreement about what our job is, so, um.
There shouldn't be. It's pretty, pretty clearly spelled out, both by policy and law, or.
Well, that's. But that's why I think this one could be helpful. We will resist solving problems that is not our job to solve, or at the very least would reach out to people to see whose job it is to solve that problem.
Yeah.
Right? So we communicate about the problem that we are hearing in our communities with the folks that could potentially help us address that problem.
Communicate about problems.
That we are aware of.
We are hearing.
We are hearing.
We are hearing.
Yeah, we is all through, maybe.
From community. Okay, keep going, Lisa.
I have to read what's under that man.
So communicate about problems we are hearing from community, and we will resist solving these problems.
And reach out.
And reach out. Good.
To district leaders about who would be the appropriate people to help problems solve.
Leaders to figure out.
You keep trying to argue.
Who, who.
Who are the appropriate people to help problems solve.
And don't need any of this.
That's what I see.
Alright, so so here's the proposal. We're gonna, we're gonna vote on this, and again, the idea is enthusiasm. You heard that first. Let me read it first. Let me read it. Let me read it out. So then, then first round is enthusiasm, second round is can live with it, and the third round is I need to make an amendment, whatever you wanna say, okay. The last stop.
Well, I don't, I don't know what that first statement is.
Let me read it. Let me read it. Not the last stop. It's.
Yeah, that one is crossed out. The last stop is crossed out.
It's communicate about problems we are hearing from the community and reach out to district leaders to figure out who are appropriate people to problem solve. Okay? Enthusiastic support? Great. Six, six oh, six oh oh. Okay, next.
Okay, so the next one is around, uh, I think forms of communications.
We need a, we need another picture. Are we finishing?
No, it's.
Yeah.
So, uh, we had like a suggestion about how you use B C C and C C properly and also to call. So to me, this speaks like the intentional and the the means of communication you choose and how we use that means of communication, as I can see this set up.
I I think that we've all had instances where we were left out of communication.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
So maybe also who, who is being communicated with, so who's included in communication, what form you're using.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
We have to be very careful though with the open meetings app, right? So if I have two board members in a meeting, and we've discussed things, I cannot then go
Yeah.
take that discussion or those findings or the thing that happened and email Amy. And that's, that's just the law, so.
Right.
I can't do that, which adds to this fog of communication, right?
Right.
And that's another, like, there's no deliberation behind that public.
That's where like.
You can do information.
You're talking about round robin meeting is what it's called. That's where.
That's what it's called.
Exactly, yes.
You can do information sharing, so if somebody.
Right, right.
Yes, so I think this is why it's important to keep our superintendent and treasurer in those communications so that they can be the central point.
Suggestion. So that's what you said, right?
So when we communicate, that we keep our superintendent and treasurer in it because they are central point of collecting all of those communications.
Is that different from what you said here? Is that a new one?
It is different.
Yeah.
That's sort of the. The central dissemination of information to the board.
Okay. Alright, so dissemination, so so someone give me a language.
Uh, communication must flow through the superintendent and treasurer to prevent misunderstanding between and among us and our.
Super treasurer and board, is that what you said?
Yes.
It must flow through the superintendent and treasurer.
And treasurer. Okay.
To.
To command.
I was gonna say to keep things consistent, but.
Miscommunication with both. Let's do both.
Miscommunication. Among board members and the broader community. Well, they, all of us to prevent miscommunication amongst.
I think you said prevent miscommunication.
Theory.
Miscommunication, okay.
Perfect. Communication must flow to the superintendent and treasurer to prevent miscommunication.
Ending, should we say something about inclusion, or is that good? Is that enough?
I I think that is enough.
That's enough.
What are, what were you gonna say with including? The fact that. Well, I mean, because this doesn't address. Times that I say I've been left out of important communication. So, I mean, the, uh, is.
How about this, to prevent miscommunication and include constituents properly, because we are, or to include.
No, I.
You could say something that the superintendent and treasurer will send out timely communication of to the board or something like that.
Oh, that's, that could be a.
Right? Communication must flow through the superintendent for communication, and they will provide timely communication to the board.
I think, and they will, to.
To enable.
And they will, right? And they will.
Yeah.
Say it again?
And they will provide ti- timely feedback or communication to the board.
Communication to the board, right? That's what you want, Amy.
The board.
Well, yeah, well, I just, I just think is that, you know.
To prevent miscommunication.
Yes.
Right?
I mean, it's clear that the, that overall we need to work on our discipline in including relevant members.
Right.
You know, every attempt will be made to, to communicate with.
Will make all, all attempts, will, will effectively provide timely information.
And, but I think that's responsible, everybody did.
To the full board.
But yes, to the full.
Full board.
Will effectively provide, okay, effectively, that's what you're asking for. Right?
Um, so, this is, but I think communication in this context is vague. I thought that's what we were talking about.
Communication must flow to superintendent and treasurer.
Well, I mean, when you say things like must, like, wait, what?
And they will, and they will effectively provide timely communication, or to prevent miscommunication.
What exactly are you referring to?
It's, it's everything by the law, like, I can't call you, then Judith, then Dorothy, then Luisa, because then now we're round robin, and you're outside the public.
Well, no, I have a clarification question.
Alright, yeah.
For instance, all the communications that I do on the side for the active transportation group, I'm the only board member that is on there. I can start adding you administrators on it, you're gonna be.
Well, here's, I think, I think we're doing two things, I think that, I think active transportation, village liaison, YSDC, the appropriate communication between board members and superintendent and treasurer, that is your report each month at the board meeting, because there's a place there. What I used to do for the old board, and I'm gonna be perfectly honest with you, I have not done it for this board for lots of reasons, is I would provide a weekly or bi-weekly written update. Here is all of the things going on, and it's informational only, not where I'm asking you questions, just informational only. I can make sure I do that, I think the, the issue at hand is facilities, I will do that. And, and Amy, when you say relevant board members, all board members are relevant.
Well, no, I, I just.
Yes, to the entire board of education.
No, I didn't say relevant, well, I mean, well, there's.
Relevant board members.
Okay, let's, let's try this now, so let's try, let's hear what you think, and, and please vote no, so then you can fix it. You don't need to do the whole group to fix it, one person can say, here's how you change word. So community must, communication must flow through superintendent and treasurer, and they will effectively provide timely communication to full board to prevent miscommunication. EG, weekly update by superintendent. Support enthusiastically, one, two, three, four, can live with it? Nine down, one, two, great, thank you, so good. Alright, TJ, what's your, what's your suggestion to change it?
It needs to be superintendent and or treasurer.
Okay, beautiful.
Is that what you wanted?
Okay, that's great.
It does, I don't want it to be, it has to be both at every single time, it's, whatever's relevant.
Okay, perfect, that's exactly.
I thought it'd be the only down vote if we helped those in the process.
It's so good, that's how the system works, so we, because it, talking and talking and talking. Change a specific amendment that will help you move to here, you have a minute.
Okay, so the, the first part, I suggest rewriting just the, you know, that first four words.
Okay.
And, and.
Trent, what's the suggestion?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, there's communication problems, again, like, through, you know, and this idea of.
Just give us the wording, give us the, how are you gonna change it?
So, yeah, communications must flow, well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying is that that should be reworked, because.
It should be worked, tell us what to do, so that makes you happy and say, I can live with it, or enthusiasm.
I, I feel like, you know, so, for example, you do weekly update by superintendent.
Superintendent, yeah.
Is that what communications, what's an example of communications that must flow through the superintendent?
Weekly updates.
Reaching out to people to schedule meetings on behalf of facilities without properly communicating, that's an example.
Reaching out to schedule meetings.
So committee meetings, so scheduling meetings.
Instead of flowing that through the superintendent and treasurer, reaching out to individuals on your own.
Don't do that, right?
And I'm saying, this is directly preventing this to have a scheduling meeting.
Directly calling vendors. Scheduling, scheduling meetings.
This is an example of like what, why this is so important.
Uh, yes.
And so that's an example of the communication.
Directly calling vendors, et cetera.
Directly calling, directly calling vendors, we're saying instead of having anybody do that willy-nilly, that communication has to flow through the superintendent and treasurer.
Funnel all questions and requests to the treasurers and.
So, do, do you wanna load it up with calling vendors, that, that?
Uh, no, let me do that.
I'm just trying to give examples for Amy.
Yeah, she asked for example, I think it was fine as well, like this.
Right, right. It is, it is, okay, alright, so, okay, Amy enough, you wanna try to take, let's take a revote. I think TJ is gonna change, how many of you support it enthusiastically? So again, say no, but then give us a very specific change, that's, this is, this is a fast process. So you're gonna vote now, or you're gonna support it, tell us where you're going.
Well, no, but I'm happy to, I'm happy to be a no, honestly.
You don't wanna try to change it?
Well, I mean, it's.
It's okay to be no, you're right.
It, it's, it's, it's a bit vague.
So there's nothing that you can suggest that would make it tolerable?
Can I, can I make a suggestion, because Dorothy say requests and questions, so I'm wondering, Amy, if requesting questions instead of communication would be more specific for you?
The language that I had is funnel, funnel all requests and questions through the superintendent.
Follow, questions, yeah.
Let's see if this helps, all?
That's more specific, I think.
All? Requests. And what, Dorothy?
And questions.
And questions.
Through, and then you can tag it.
Right. So instead of communication must flow, funnel all requests and communications through superintendent and or treasurer, and they will effectively provide timely communication to full board to prevent miscommunication. You don't need to have EG weekly.
Should we lose all?
No.
No, I don't think so, I think that's probably hardly a deal here, so.
Um, well, it's, there's a point, I mean, there's a judgment call, and so is our communication.
That's a problem.
That's when the miscommunication that's happening.
Yeah, yeah, well, and that's why, and that's what I was suggesting is that, you know, there needs to be, you know, I understand, and, you know, I understand that there's, like I said before, there's undercurrents about, you know, things that have happened in the board. I'd like to understand more about what those problems could be, so that I can understand more about what we're, what we're trying to.
Alright, I think we need to call a question, so let's, so let's call a question one last time, and you're welcome to stay down or move over. So let's, how many of you support this as it is? I'm gonna read it again, sorry. Funnel all requests and questions through the superintendent or treasurer and or treasurer to provide, sorry, treasurer, and they will effectively provide timely communication to full board to prevent miscommunication. Support it enthusiastically, TJ, are you with us there? Amy, sideways down?
I'd be happy if you take out all.
Let's try it, I think you're not gonna get it, but let's try. So now we're trying this funnel requests and questions without the all, you'll have your other board member with you if you, if you accept that, and if you don't, then we probably will move on. How many of you can accept funnel requests and questions through superintendent and or treasurer to prevent miscommunication?
Because I think that qualifies.
Oh, sorry, and they will effectively provide timely communication to full board to prevent miscommunication.
Well, yeah.
Question, wait, a question, Bert?
But you just said to me that this qualifies it, but.
That's a good answer.
It's not a loophole, what, what I've heard you saying is that you're not comfortable with it, because you feel like it is saying that all is, you would like to have a possibility that it's not every communication, that's why I, that's why I understood why you blocked it.
The, well, the intention is to prevent miscommunications, right?
Right.
So what we're doing is to funnel requests and questions through the superintendent or the treasurer. Um, so, but, and or the treasurer, so, but it's, it's, again, there's a few judgment calls here in terms of who's the appropriate person to contact at the moment. So, you know, it's, that's, I, I think that the intention is to prevent miscommunication, and that will cover what we're trying to, what we're trying to regulate.
Whether it's all or not. Great, good, thank you.
We don't need to say all, we, because we're adults.
This is an intention.
But what we're trying to do is prevent miscommunication, and that's why we're asking.
Dorothy has a question.
I have a question, what is the downside to send all requests and questions to the superintendent and treasurer?
Again, you said, I am not familiar with, uh, I'm not familiar with the specific instances that you are trying to regulate, and so it's, uh, so, and I understand your need for preventing communication, and I feel like this is something.
Miscommunication. Miscommunication, miscommunication.
We're, we're not trying to prevent communications, we're trying to prevent the miscommunication.
That's what I said.
Yeah, yeah, she, she misjudged, that's fine, that's fine. Okay. Yeah, okay, so, um.
So, I, I mean, the intent is not to make sure that every single time that we ask a question in the school, that it goes through the superintendent and the treasurer.
Right.
The intent is, if, is to prevent miscommunications and to inform, right?
That's right. I think you're completely right, and, and now the question for the rest of them is to figure out whether all is really essential to them, or your yes vote is, is more essential to them, that's, that's a question for you to consider. Terry, you have a question or comment?
I, I just have a comment, and, and I think all is important, because I will give you two specific instances, which we've already talked about. One is a board member reaching out to an architect and an engineer to set up a meeting before ever contacting Jay or myself or the board president. Another issue is a board member contacting a vendor, or directing someone else who is not a school employee to contact a vendor, and the vendor calls me and says, what in the world do you want?
Okay.
Those are two specific instances to, in answer to your question. It's not, it, it's, we are trying to streamline communication so that we can prevent miscommunication.
Can I, can I just also maybe just make a link, here is like, I think, Amy, you're saying, you know, we're gonna, we're adults, we can kind of decide that for ourselves, but I think the idea here is that through the process of filtering it through the superintendent and the treasurer, that decision will become clear, so you don't have to do the pre-work of that, what you need to do is send it to the people who can advise on that decision, that's what I'm hearing. Is that understanding of the strategy?
And also, TJ?
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, and that's why TJ's amendment, the and or, is, you know, you said, well, I don't, I heard you say, I don't know sometimes who.
And that's one of the reasons why I say don't say all.
And Tony, it was not.
Well, so, when you say, I'm not sure who, then and. If it, if you don't know, should I ask Terry, or should I ask Jay?
Ask them both.
Ask Terry and Jay. That's, isn't that, isn't that a simple?
But that's different from the all, the all.
Yes.
All is about something completely else.
All is that, if you have a, a question or a request, then you should send it to the treasurer or superintendent.
So what if I'm working on a committee, and I have a question for my fellow committee member, do I still have to send it to you too?
Committees are.
There's no downside to doing it, except.
Well, I mean, it depends, are you in the committee meeting and you're having the conversation right then, you're not gonna stop, and.
No, no, no.
But if it's outside of that committee.
They should be copied, or they should be included in that communication.
Yes, because that's how the, otherwise the miscommunication could.
Alright, I think we have enough conversation, so let's take our revote. Right, and, and you hear the, you hear the concern that it's vague, and, and that's been expressed, and so if you.
Well, yeah, and, you know, again, is that this is a concern, and I feel like if we, you know, if we, I think we understand what the intention is, especially the folks in this room, and I think Judith would also. But I, I also caution about putting everything in there, because, I mean, we have to be respectful of these people's times also, and again, is that.
They're asking you to tell them everything, don't, don't be over respectful of their time.
Well, yeah, but, you know, we've already, you know, there, there's, and there's, there's summaries that we, that we put out, right?
Okay, I think we've, we've heard, we've heard you, so let's take our vote, and if it's still down, that's fine, completely down, fine.
Oh, where are we at?
So now we're taking a vote to see this language, which has now been amended, funnel all requests and questions through superintendent and or treasurer, and they will effectively provide timely communications to full board, period. Enthusiastically support?
With all.
With all.
With all.
Okay, can support, can live with it? Done.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, not a problem, that's fine. And your, and your concerns about it being too vague have been heard, and, so it's five, zero, one, still passes. Okay, guys, it's now four forty-five, I think we're done, I think we need to do a checkup. So we have three sets of, of agreements, and we have lots of others that still have to be worked through. TJ and I will work out, right, and how that might happen. All of this data will be organized and shared with you, and, um, so, we'll include, we'll include the, um, ethics, maybe the protocols and the.
The key note with protocols.
Right, they'll be in the packet. So let's, so let's stand up now and reflect for this. Oh, it's all for you, right? Alright, um, so not yet what we're taking away, but, but maybe, maybe so, maybe, maybe what, um, I don't know, how do you formulate this, what do we wanna check out?
Well, I guess I'm curious to know, like, where is this landing for people when you look at having come to consensus in these agreements, like, how does that feel, having done that?
Consent, no, consensus.
Consent, sorry, consent before.
Consensus on true and consent on, on a third.
You know, how does that feel, like, how is that landing compared to not having any of that when you walked in? Because I was hearing from people that that was important, so I guess I'm curious, like, how is that landing to have at least a couple of those have already been discussed and reached, you know, consensus or consent or?
I mean, it's a start, I don't know. I feel so far as the same or finished, but.
There is a bunch of things that I was hoping we'd get a chance to talk about, maybe we'll get a chance to talk about. And, you know, I, what I hear is there's frustration with what happened in the last two weeks, right? And that's really, I feel like, especially the last couple of weekends, was really colored by that. And, you know, working through a process that's been going on for six years, and there's, and there's structural, there's systemic, or not even structural, systemic, there's pervasive communication issues that we had for a long time. And, you know, they need to be addressed if we're gonna be successful.
So, Amy, I guess my question for you is, do you feel like these agreements could help in any way address that, that we've come to? Because I mean, that was the purpose of creating this.
No, well, because actually, you see, this board is more than finger pointing, we just had a bunch of finger pointing.
Well, my question is why you just look at Terry in the way that you just did, that was really intense.
Because I wanted to be successful, this is about being, you being successful.
When you, when you say, we have pervasive communication problems, and look at me, you know.
No, for the past six years.
I feel this, I live this job, like, all of you, please let me finish.
Okay, but what I want you to hear is why this is bad.
Board member madness, I, I respectfully ask you to let me finish. I try not to take this job personally, but like all of you, you know, this is personal for us. Not only am I superintendent, I live in this community, I've given up my old community to live here, and I'm trying to love it. And, and it's a process, it's different, but I am giving all I've got to this community and this job. So when you say things like that.
Yeah.
You, you throw these bombs, and look at people, and then smile and walk out the door, have a good weekend, that is highly problematic.
Why? Because I want, I'm here because there are you. Okay, you've tried this, I mean, the school's tried this twice, right? And I'm here to help, and I want you to hear how I want to help, and I don't feel, I would, would like to be heard. And instead, I feel discomfort, you know, I sense your discomfort with somebody I've known for years, I sense your discomfort, right? You should be able to be more comfortable with me, you should be able to get to a point of trust, right?
Let's use a high statement, let's use a high statement.
Well, then there's work that has to be done, and finger pointing, which is what we just did, is not gonna be.
No, it's not asking, asking everyone to follow the same procedures, I, I don't see how that's finger pointing correct.
No, it's not asking, asking everyone to follow the same procedures, I, I don't see how that's finger pointing correct.
Well, you just expressed a lot of anger towards full board members who's not here, so I choose.
There's some frustration there, and I, I think we don't need to go into this room right now, let's, let's be with who's here right now. And, 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 you know, there's, there's ups and downs, ups and downs of this two days, a little bit like what happened last week, which is, should we cancel? No, we shouldn't cancel, we have to keep going, and that's basically gonna be what happens going forward. Everything is gonna be partly okay and partly not okay, and you don't have to live with that, and you maybe move the arrow a little bit more towards the okay. We now have three agreements, two of which were complete consensus, and the third in which you registered your complaints and they were heard, and disagreements about, about it, which is this bull makes you uncomfortable, I hope that was heard, and I hope there's a way to address it, even while you have an agreement that you're moving forward with. So, you know, I don't think you ever are gonna have, you're not, you don't have to, you guys do not have to reach consensus, but you do have to reach a sense that we are in this together where we disagree with each other and where we agree with each other. We are having to move forward and show this community that we can agree disagreeably, we can disagree agreeably, and we can agree, and we can agree. Those are the two things that's really essential for everybody to see, so I think you're doing it, I think you've done it. Luisa?
I was just gonna say that I don't think anybody here should feel blamed personally or professionally or in any capacity about the past six years of the difficulty of this process for our community, and I heard the way that your eyes pointed to Terry, I hear blame in that.
No, there's not blame.
Okay, well, I wanna just be clear that what we as a community and as a district asked a new superintendent to step into some very difficult place, and I just want us to make sure that we are listening to each other and not blaming each other for the past. And listen to each other and not burden each other.
And I would like us to be able to be less defensive.
And I also heard you say you'd like, you'd like to be recognized for all the work that you're doing, and I certainly do.
Oh, you know, there's, I think it's important to create space for people, and, you know, I love the work that you've been doing on board, so, but I also feel like there's times that, you know, when you're not talking about, if there's times that this has devolved into personal attacks, and we need to resist that. That's when we're not at our best.
So I think that when we experience or see a personal attack, we need to practice calling each other in. What I just experienced, that communication that you gave, it felt personal.
Well, but it was.
And so I just wanna say, I'm trying to call you in and say, do you see that Terry is feeling that as a personal thing? And just calling us in to say, let's, we all get heated, we all have feelings, let's just take a, a deep breath
Yeah.
and say, okay, that's not our intention, it's not to blame any person here, let's take a step back from that.
Well, and the hope is, is that we're all working towards what we hope is a success, right?
Yeah, okay, let's let other people talk, any other reflections, comments, checkup?
Something we can all agree is a success.
Can I just make a comment as well, like, I think it's, um, it's really important, and, uh, yeah, I think it's really important for people to be able to share the impact that things have on them without them being perceived as a blame, so I can share how something's impacted me, and I can put that into the circle, and that doesn't mean I'm blaming anybody, it means that I'm sharing
Yeah.
how something's impacted me, and I think that, you know, we heard some of that during these two days, how, how people are being impacted, how they're feeling, and that affects their ability to successfully report, so I think being able to voice that is important, and being able to step back and, and recognize that it's not, it's not blaming somebody else, but it's saying, I have this experience, and that's, and that's valid, right? Like, I think that that's important to be able to put it into the circle, appreciate you saying that.
Okay. Good, let's let other people talk.
I'm happy that we came down to a timeline and a process, I, I want more out of the communication of the minutes because it's been broken trust here, and there's just so much we, so far we can go today with this, for a reason that we know. But I'm thankful that we have a timeline and a process that we all here are looking to. And, yeah, I would say to get comfort, we need trust. Well.
It's basically. Anyone else have any reflections or ideas? Anyone else, anyone else who has any reflection there? Okay, one more round, any reflections, people who have reflective, anything else to say?
We can tell a little bit story, but we have to come, we have to get to a point where we're actually sharing the information with each other, and I agree, there's problems with that. We have to tell that story, and it needs to be grounded in educational value.
Thank you. Okay, any other, anyone else? If not, we have ten more minutes, and I'm now gonna have us all do a Saint Ben's Block, so get your clothes on.
Oh.
Um, you wanna adjourn first?
Um, I wanna adjourn before I Saint Ben's Block, yes.
That sounds fair.
I wanna take five minutes.
Maybe, maybe.